Okay. I see we got some gas coming in. Can y'all hear me good?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, okay, cool. Just then. Got a seven oh five start time. How many of the council we have here? One, two, three, four. That's good. That's enough. We only should be missing one member of our council, so. She had an emergency. So it looks like we haven't, we have enough, uh. So again, greetings everyone. Uh, this is the monthly meeting of the Sun Village Town Council. I am, uh, Anserel Mohammed. The current mayor of Sun Village and the president of the Sun Village Town Council. And we're gonna just have the rest of our council members introduce themselves in order.
I'm Saleek Waevell, correspondent secretary, Sun Village Town Council.
My name is Mustafa Bay, treasurer of Sun Village Ca- uh, Town Council.
I'm Quincy Hooks, parliamentarian of Sun Village Town Council.
Um, yes, thank you. We also have, uh, an absent member. She had a recent emergency, emergency within like the past hour. And she won't be with us. Uh, hopefully she'll come in, but I doubt that she will. Um. Uh, our recording secretary, Mr. Mila Hooks is absent. Also, we have another member, Mr. Boswick, if you can. Say hi to everyone.
Hi, I'm Chuck Boswick, uh, not a member of the town council, but I represent Los Angeles County Supervisor Catherine Parker.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, so. A little bit of how this town council, uh, meeting is gonna run today. It's gonna be running a little bit unorthodox. Um, we were not here last month. However, um. We did have a meeting the first of the year and we have some issues and discussions to just brief everybody up on. Uh, this meeting. And then, um, we're gonna go into that and then we're gonna go into the new business. Which is not much, there's some things, some concerns that the council has, and then we're gonna allow Mr. Boswick from Los Angeles County to speak and give some announcements. And then we're gonna open up the floor for our guests. We see guests here. We see, uh, Mr. Will Berry, Minus, Mr. Alex Henderson. And. Ms. Malia Bell. Uh, feel free to open your cameras. And if you were, if you are gonna speak and talk. Okay, so. Not last month, but the January twenty-fifth meeting that we had in the beginning of the year. We spoke about some things and that, that old business. Um, it's just real brief, but it's very big. Um. We spoke about. The California Reparations Task Force. And their. Current bill, Assembly Bill Thirty-One Twenty-One. Uh, speaking about reparations for. Uh, African Americans and indigenous people of California. Um, the council of Sun Village has read that document and reached out to the California Reparations Task Force. And also held, hailed their own vote. We held our own vote regarding the matter. Because, uh, when we read the document, there was a lot of talk of redlining and. Uh, land encroachment. In which, uh, we see and acknowledge that Sun Village does fall within those, those, uh, guidelines. So, um, we have a vote back in December, um. That do we, the Sun Village Town Council, feel that the people of Sun Village, those ones who deem themselves by self-identification to be. The villagers. Um, do they deserve reparations? Uh, based off of the history. That, uh, we have another member, uh, not another member, but another guest coming in. Uh. Those people who, uh, were affected and not only just the people that are affected, but how the land of Sun Village was affected. We know that Sun Village. Um, has had. Border issues, um. With neighboring towns and neighboring town councils. So we did help, help, hold a vote and we unanimously. We unanimously. Agreed that Sun Village does deserve reparations, not just the people of Sun Village, but. The actual landmass of Sun Village. Um. Uh, that last meeting, Ms. Donald Tremere was there and she gave us words of support. And, um. We, we appreciated that, so the county, it, uh, does know about, uh, what we're. What we have been discussing. Also, um. Before I let the council speak on that, I wanna also speak about another issue that they kinda. Uh. Are intertwined and I'm gonna show you how, and it is our memorandum of understanding that we have with. Um, the city of Palmdale. Um, back in September two thousand fourteen, before this administration of the Sun Village Town Council was in office. A prior administration. Did sign a, an agreement with them, a memorandum of understanding in which. Palmdale. Would, uh, remove its sphere of influence from the town of Sun Village and. In light of reparations and in light of some of the things that. Uh, Palmdale had advanced and, and the, uh, the mining and the other areas of above some, above us. Well, not really above us, in us, in Sun Village, but. Some addresses in Sun Village reflect Palmdale instead of Sun Village, so we say the do, these areas were the areas that. Palmdale was having their sphere of influence over the land of Sun Village, because basically, truthfully, like to be frankly, uh. The land was not being used, so I can see how. These things can take place. But in the light of reparations. And us knowing that Sun Village did. Um, suffer land loss and all kinds of other losses through the red.
Yeah, you try, you chopping up.
If you can.
If you can hear me, you chopping up.
Brother Quincy, yo, 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 yo. I can hear you. You can't hear me?
Yeah, you, you was chopping, you was chopping up. It was breaking up.
Okay. Alright, so, um, let me speed it up. Uh. So basically, we're saying that these two documents are. Uh. They kinda intertwined and it's a document and, uh, it's one of the. The major documents that we looking at because that memorandum of understanding had a ten-year. Uh, stretch. It is, it's a ten-year agreement. Uh, two thousand fourteen puts us at, uh, s-. It puts us at September twenty twenty-four. Um. So, we're gonna be addressing some of the aspects of that memorandum of understanding with Palmdale. And maybe putting the county of Los Angeles on notice of our communications that we have in with Palmdale. Alright, so, um, that's our old business. That would, that's what we discussed, uh, back in January. I wanna know. Does anyone on our council have anything that they wanna say? About the old business?
Well, I don't have anything at this moment to say.
Yes, sir.
No.
Okay, yes, sir. Treasurer says no. Anything from the recording secretary?
Have to get unmuted. No, sir.
Good, good. Okay. So, um. New business. One thing that has been a concern and we have been seeing in the news. Is the homeless situation in the city of Los Angeles. Not just the city, but the county of Los Angeles as well. But, uh, we know that the news has been reflecting that the homeless situation in the city of Los Angeles has been having. People talk about the Antelope Valley. And. Rural areas in the Antelope Valley, which is the fifth district of the county of Los Angeles. And they're talking things like, one thing that I saw was there were some law enforcement speaking and they were saying that this, uh. Particular homeless issue. It is a homeless issue, but underlying the homeless issue is a, a substance abuse issue. Saying that most of the people that are homeless. That are in these encampments and under the freeways in the city of Los Angeles and in downtown Los Angeles are really. A su- uh, drug addicts and they need help and that these, there's programs that are being developed. To service this, uh, this demographic, but they're looking at. Sending the homeless people to the Antelope Valley. This is a lot of the talk and. Just us and the Sun Village Town Council knowing, um. How in the prior years, so, Sun Village has been getting the short end of the stick and kinda like the council has not been given true acknowledgement, only like as advisory and stuff. We were like concerned, it's like, wow, are they gonna try to use Palmdale's? Uh, memorandum of understanding with us to go and build some stuff on the land and then the people of Sun Village are gonna have to deal with homeless people and stuff, so that's gonna be. One of the questions that we'll direct to Mr. Boswick after I finish talking about it, but. Uh. We hear that the mayor, uh, Ms., uh, uh, Karen Bass. She's been getting some pressures from like all over and then we saw. Um. A meeting with, uh. Santa Monica, this, uh, city of Santa Monica and, uh. Palmdale, I think it. There was this homeless situation and there was discussions about them transferring their homeless, you know, a hour up the road to where we're at, so. That is, uh, a concern and that was on our new busi- business agenda. Do we have anybody on the council who has anything to speak on that?
No, not at the moment.
No.
Yes, sir. Okay, okay.
Yeah, just, uh, correspondent secretary Saleek, uh, just, uh, further information from. Neighboring, uh, counties regarding the homelessness, uh, what are their plans? Uh, and how can Sun Village, uh, aid in some of the support? Uh, to provide services, but also to, um, how to ensure that none of this. Is, uh, support spilled over into the Sun Village Town.
Yes, sir. Good, that's right. Um, basically the same thing I said in, in a better way. How can we aid and support? And what was that? Saleek?
No, I would just say, uh, correspondent secretary Saleek speaking.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to know how, you know, Sun Village Town Council can be of support in services, uh, for the demand and, you know, with the homelessness that's going on. And neighboring counties, uh, what are their agendas and how they look to, uh, move with efforts to, um, to combat this homelessness. And just ensuring that Sun Village Town Council, uh, Sun Village, uh. Doesn't have a wave of, uh, uh, a lot of the homelessness moving into the county, uh, a way of force.
Okay, yes, sir. Um, okay. Um, that, uh, concludes our, our new business and our discussion for the new business. I wanna then now acknowledge the. Uh, representative from the county of Los Angeles, fifth district, Mr. Charles Boswick, i- in case he has anything to say about what we discussed and, uh, any announcements that he, he has for us.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you what's going on with the Karen Bass idea, uh, but first I wanna ask you about the, uh, the tribal township. Um. I didn't remember that being discussed at any council meeting before and I'd never heard of a tribal township. And you're collecting stuff like social security numbers, which would make me kinda nervous, um. If I was collecting social security numbers or if I was giving them out, cause that's kinda thing that gets stolen in identity theft, so. I, I, I've never heard of the, uh, tribal township, so what is that supposed to be and how do you guys have authority to declare one?
Oh, yes, sir. Um, that's a good question and, uh, we did kinda go over that in January. And, uh, that is and was a part of the vote that we had regarding Sun Village and the records that we have. Uncovered about the land of Sun Village and the founder of Sun Village that. The land was once indigenous territory and. The people that were the indigenous people of Sun Village did suffer losses and we looked into international law. Uh, one of those, uh, international law documents was the. The United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. In which. It outlines by many nations, they signed it and it basically says that. In indigenous peoples wherever they may, in any of the areas of, uh, North America, Central, South America. They have these rights to. Form, uh, their, their governments back, so. In that light, we're saying. Yes, Sun Village does have that right and we did start making moves towards that, so we connected with some tribes. For reciprocal recognition in that way. Uh, two tribes to be specific. And they are aiding and assisting us in forming or continuing the forming of that government. Um. And this is for the indigenous peoples of Sun Village and, um. What else can I say about that? Am I being clear? Uh, there's other international laws. You said authority. What authority do we have? Um. According to international law and other, uh, domestic laws. And the light of reparations and us being in the position of authority being over the jurisdiction of Sun Village. We declared that to be so, just like, uh. I would say like, uh, there's, uh, there was some more history made prior to us, which was in Oakland. Where they were returned about five acres back to the indigenous people there. And worked towards giving them their land back. So in that same light, that's what we're doing here in Sun Village. And, um. As far as the business that we're conducting with the people who are. Wanting to be a part of this and sign up with this. We are using certain things to identify them to make sure that, uh, we're not getting any people. That are committing fraud, so we're doing background checks and one of those ways that we use it is through. Um. The social security number to make sure that that person is, uh, who they say that they are and we don't, uh, get any fraud coming in our way.
Okay, yeah, I don't know if anybody's gonna agree with any of that, but, and I just be careful with those social security numbers. I. Periodically people will try to tell me social security numbers if they're, you know, they're dealing with the county, said, no, no, I don't want those, cause they get stolen, but. Anyway, that's, that's on you guys, uh.
Mm-hmm.
You know, proven that this is what's really gonna happen, but on the homelessness issue, so. I don't think there's ever gonna be mass amounts of Los Angeles homeless people being sent to the Antelope Valley. Number one, they won't go. Um, so this all started by something that Karen Bass said during her campaign back in May a year ago. Uh. She was talking to a Los Angeles Times report, uh, columnist, Steve Lopez. And he says, hey, homelessness, that's, that's your, uh, your big priority. What are you gonna do about that? Where are you gonna put people? And she says, well, the city owns lots of land. We've, we've got places we can put housing. We've got lots of land in Palmdale. Maybe we could build a village there. And that's the sum, uh, sum total. Um, they've also asked, uh, the city of Los Angeles a year ago, year and a half ago, tw- twenty twenty-one. Asked the Federal Aviation Administration if they can use either some of the vacant buildings or some of the, um. The vacant land on their Palmdale property, uh, for housing. They have to ask the Federal Aviation Administration this because that land was all bought for an airport, uh, forty years ago. And they, so they have to, and it was used, they used eminent domain to buy some of that property. And so it has to be used for an airport. They can't use it for anything they want to. Um, I don't know what's happened to that, but, uh, city of Palmdale pitched a fit, Lancaster pitched a fit later on, um.
You can, uh. Boswick?
Huh? Los Angeles.
Yeah, you were, you were breaking up, uh.
Oh, okay.
Prior to you saying that Palmdale pitched a fit.
Palmdale, so Palmdale objected. I shouldn't say pitch a fit. Uh, Palmdale objected, um, Lancaster objected as well, said, no, 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 we, we don't wanna have. Thousands of homeless people from Los Angeles sent here. Um, Karen Bass has written to my boss and said she doesn't have any intention. And I don't know how much of this you guys are getting. She doesn't have any intention of, of, of mass importation of homeless people to the Antelope Valley. Um. I will tell you that there are various proposals, there always have been for the last five years for individuals or individual groups that own land in. Sun Village or Lake Los Angeles or Little Rock. Um, to, to house homeless people there. Now, this would be six homeless people or twelve homeless people. I think the largest one I saw would have been about, about a hundred. None of those has gone anywhere. I, I personally am against putting homeless people in Sun Village or Little Rock or Lake LA or Pear Blossom, or Acton for that matter. Because it is so far from services. Um. Oh, where's the nearest doctor to, uh, to Sun Village? Well, it's over at, you know, Forty-seventh East and Avenue S or Fortieth East and, uh, and Palmdale Boulevard. Uh, that's where the closest ones are. Uh, you know, there's a, there's a ninety-nine, no, I guess it's a Dollar General store. Um, there's one in Little Rock, but that's really all there is. Uh, what kind of bus service do you have for people to get anywhere? Well, you know, the bus comes every hour at the best and two hours most of the time and not at all at night. So it's not a good place to put people who need exceptional services. So the county right now. Um, is participating with other governments and nonprofits and building lots of affordable housing or supportive housing. We've got. Something over three hundred apartment units that are supposed to open this year in, uh, Lancaster and Palmdale. And those are all in Lancaster and Palmdale. I mean, even that's far enough away from services. Um, but it's, it's closer than say a hundred street east and avenue Q would be.
Right, right.
So that's what's going on. Um. We had quite a bit of time there during the pandemic when the county was not shutting down encampments. Um. We, we are starting to move on that just because it's not safe for people to be there. Um, the, the encampments we mostly see is, or I mostly see, it's not people living under, uh, bridges, though there are some of that in, in Lancaster. It's people who've moved a RV, uh, onto a piece of desert and they're living there. Maybe they got four or five friends who, in their own RVs are living around there. Well. That's not safe. Uh, we've had two deaths in the last two months at RV encampments, um, that I know of i- i- in the Antelope Valley. Uh, from fires because the people don't have any heat in their RVs. I think they start little campfires and it gets out of control and it kills them. Um. We had one just three nights ago and then we had another one about three weeks ago. The three nights ago, one was up near, uh, Avenue H and Division Street in Lancaster. And the previous one's up near G and the freeway, um, in, in our jurisdiction. Um, there's a homeless encampment that we've gotten quite a few complaints on that's, that's north of Jackie Robinson Park in Sun Village. It's south of Palmdale Boulevard and, um. East, uh, and west of Ninetieth Street East. Um, you can see it from behind the Dollar General store, I think, and I think you can see it from Jackie Robinson Park as well, and that's developed over about the last. Three years and it's gotten bigger. I think there's maybe four or five RVs there, but hopefully we'll get them to move out. They're offered places to live. Sometimes they don't like shelters. We've been making lots of motel rooms available to homeless people over the winter. It's very expensive to rent. Motel rooms for homeless people. Um. But we've been making a lot of that just so people wouldn't freeze to death or, you know, burn themselves up. Um. So we've got, we've got all that going on. Um, we're also trying to, in fact, I got a meeting, I think tomorrow, um, about an idea of. The county setting up kind of an RV parking place, um, in the Antelope Valley for these people right now who are scattered across the desert, squatting on people's land. You know, they're essentially just trespassing on land. Um, and so we're, we wanna set one up to those someplace in the supervisor's district. Um. And, you know, that would be a, a safer place. They'd be able to get water easier. Uh, they'd be able to get counseling, cause the idea is not just let them stay there for the rest of their lives, but to try to get them into counseling. I don't know that I'd agree that all the people who are homeless, uh. Are drug addicts. In fact, I wouldn't agree with that. I, I'm sure they're all not drug addicts. Quite a few of them probably use drugs, but. I, I think quite a few of them have got some kind of mental issues. Um, I wouldn't even go so far to call them crazy. Cause some of the, I talked to quite a few homeless people. We have one woman who comes and visits us all the time. I don't know what's wrong with her. You can't understand her. She's very nice. She's always very nice to me. She grew up in the Antelope Valley, but she's fifty years old now and when you're fifty years old, you shouldn't be living underneath a, uh, you know, a freeway in a storm drain. Um, and that's where she is most of the time. She's got a sister, runs a business in, uh, outside Chicago, but the sister says she doesn't wanna come back there and live. But so, I, I don't know, and, uh, most of the people I run into, not all, but an awful lot of them up here are older. And the ones that come from Los Angeles, they kinda bring themselves up here and I think it's because it's safer. It's like, you know, would you li- rather. Live in a cardboard box on a sidewalk in Skid Row or would you rather camp under a Joshua tree outside Lancaster? Well. Uh, you know, it's, 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 you're less likely to be stabbed if you're around here, but we, we still have violence, um, at the, 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 uh. Encampments, um, and that's another reason why we're trying to get rid of them.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I, I don't think that there's anything gonna come. I don't think. Los Angeles is gonna build a homeless village on their airport property. Now, the airport property is a very big thing. It is a hundred and seventeen thousand acres. Uh, you can see it just north of Sun Village where the houses stop, so if you drive north on Ninetieth and you get to. Just north of Q, um, all of a sudden the houses stop and it's just open desert and old farm fields. That's all city of Los Angeles property. It goes all the way up to. About Avenue. Where's it go? About Avenue N, I think, or M almost, uh, of Los Angeles property and it goes. About from a hundred and tenth east over to fiftieth east and in some parts down to about thirtieth east. It's a huge section of land. Um. But it was bought to, to build an airport there. The airport's never been built, but the, Los Angeles can't just decide to put somebody there. And again, I don't think they can make people in Los Angeles go out there, cause it would just be like a concentration camp is what it would be. What would you do? Put up barracks with barbed wire around them? It just, it just wouldn't work and there's no sewage, there's no water, there's nothing out there. Wh- what would you, where, how'd you get water to the, these things, uh, unless you, you know. Broke every kind of rule of, of modern American, uh, development there is. Anyway, so that's, um, that's it. I'm trying to. Anyway, so that's, um, that's it. I'm trying to think if I have any. Uh, announcements coming up. We do have free, free dump day. Um, uh so anybody who lives in Sun Village uh can take a ton of trash for free. On April eighth, that's Saturday. What is that? Is that two Saturdays from now? One Saturday now, for now. Two Saturdays from now. Um, to uh the Lancaster landfill and dump a ton for free. They just have to show a driver's license or a utility bill or something that proves they. They live in Sun Village or in any of the unincorporated, Lake Los Angeles, Acton, any of those. Um.
Um, I saw another email that you sent, uh pardon me if I cut you off. Finished? Okay, um, uh, one of the recent emails you sent was the pharmaceutical drugs with the uh. The chemical Xylazine and.
Oh, the Xylazine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, uh so one of our problems up here has been, um. Narcan, fentanyl. Fentanyl is poisoning lots of people in the Antelope Valley, not hundreds. But I'll bet you it's been dozens and a lot of homeless people die from fentanyl overdoses. Um, the public health has been making a big push against that, trying to tell people what the warning signs are. Training people and using Narcan, that's the, it's kind of an asthma inhaler kind of thing where if somebody passes out from a fentanyl overdose. You can, you can blow this stuff into their mouth and uh it'll, it'll block the fentanyl and they'll start breathing again. Um, I've been told one of the dangers of fentanyl is a lot of counterfeit prescriptions, not. You know, not methamphetamine or whatnot, but, but oxycodone or something you'd get from a pharmacy. People are buying that online and they're thinking they're getting a great deal. They don't have to pay as much as they pay at the pharmacy and going down to CVS. But instead they're getting counterfeit stuff that is loaded with fentanyl and so then they take these pills and they die. Um, and there's, there's quite a few. I think we had, I think we had two fentanyl overdoses. Over the weekend in the Antelope Valley, not in the rural areas, but in the, in Lancaster and Palmdale. Uh, so there's a lot of those. And so there's this new drug that seems to be making its way out here called Xylazine. And I can't spell that, but it's, it's another drug that public health is worried about. And they think it's another one that's gonna be used to uh contaminate uh fake prescription medicine that people will buy online. Or that will be used to boost um other kind of uh, uh, uh illicit. Uh medicines, il- illicit drugs and people won't know what they're getting into and they'll die from this stuff too. I don't know that we've had any overdoses here. Um, I don't, I'm almost, in fact, I'm pretty sure we haven't. I don't even know if we've had an overdose in Los Angeles County. But it's in other places of the United States, so public health thinks it'll end up here sooner or later. And it's just another thing to be worried about on, on top of the fentanyl uh problem.
Yes, sir. Does anyone in the council have any comments about what Mr. Boswick said? About, uh, I mean, the three subjects that he spoke on?
Or anything else, any, any other questions you get?
No, I don't have any. I don't have any questions right now.
Okay.
I don't have any questions right now.
Uh, Salik?
Uh, yes, Mr. Boswick, uh correspondent secretary Salik. Just uh earlier in your comments, um. You made a comment and you indicated uh regarding the tribal township. And you uh you said that, um. You're not sure if any, if anyone would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. So I, my understanding is that the reparations process is being done by a task force. Uh, at the state level, uh cr- the task force is created by the assembly bill you mentioned, or that was mentioned a few minutes ago. And it's gonna set up the parameters on who qualifies and how you qualify. Um, so I, I think the, how the reparations, who's, who's eligible is gonna be. Done by, at the state level. Um, and. I don't think there's any legal force to the township. I mean, I think your website says things about. Uh, tax benefits or tax exemptions. Uh, I wouldn't suggest that anybody not pay their income taxes or their property taxes. Uh, because they think the title township will, will, is gonna exempt them. That would just be a dangerous thing to let people believe. Um, so, but that, that's, that's it. I mean, I know how cities are created. Uh, for cities to be created, you have to have a vote of the citizens, of the people living within the borders of the proposed city. Um, I've never heard of a tribal township. I don't know how they'd be created and I don't know if, if, you know, the state or the federal government. Or anybody else would, would recognize it as having any powers or authority.
Okay. Any, anything else from anyone else? Regarding that? Okay, um, at this point. We are thirty sixth minutes into the meeting. I want to allow this time for the people who are guests to speak on anything that they've heard today and. Uh, any concerns that they have, they wanna bring before the council or to the county. So, uh. I'm not gonna call out any particular names. If you do have anything that you wanna say, you, you're, you're free to chime in. Okay, so if um, no one has anything to say. Um, at this, at this part of our meeting, uh we have finished. Speaking about our old business and new business for this meeting and. If there's nothing else to say, we can adjourn the meeting. Uh, once again, does anyone else have anything to say?
Yeah, I don't have anything to say. I don't have anything to say.
Okay, um, so. This is our third meeting, uh really our second meeting in the third month of the year of the Sun Village Town Council. Um, we, our next meeting will be on the fourth Monday of this, of next month, which is in April. Um, seven o'clock. Anyone who wants to come is, is, is open. This is our public meeting, so. Spread the word, let people know that we're, we're public on this platform. And if there's nothing else to say, I wanna adjourn the meeting and let everybody know. Uh, good night.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.